Call to order and roll call. Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Swab.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Present.
All Commissioners are present. We have a quorum. Thank you. May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Welcome to the City of Kingman Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Wednesday, January 10th, thank you, 2024. All right, we will start with our approval of last month's meeting minutes. This was the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, November 14th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say yes.
Aye.
Yes, all right.
Yes.
Perfect. Motion approved. All right, next, we will move to the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The Commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The Commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comments?
Just the ones that I have.
These here are public? Okay. All right, well, we will start with the first one then. We have Clark Rosas. You can approach the podium.
Thank you. I understand that this meeting tonight is regarding zoning changes for the area in which I reside. I moved here a couple of years ago and I picked this Rancho Santa Fe neighborhood. Is there something wrong?
Yeah, are these, these aren't public comments then. These are.
You just called me up.
I did just call you up. She told me that these were public comments, but these are actually for that agenda item, the third agenda item. So we'll just pull you up in just a second.
I apologize.
Are, are any of these public?
Give you vacation. Forgot what you're doing.
Are any of these public or they're all for the?
They're all for, for the reason.
They're all for number three. Okay. So does anybody have any public comments? Those are just general comments for us to take into consideration about different things with planning and zoning, but not according to any of the agenda items today. Okay. I do not see any, so I'm going to move us along then. The next thing we have is our new business. The first is a public hearing on the CUP extension of time request, case CUP 23-004. This is a request from Lee Meacham, manager principal of Zuni Village Park LLC applicant and Zuni Village Park LLC property owner for an extension of time for a previously approved conditional use permit, CUP, CUP 22-0007, to allow an extension of a recreational vehicle park on property zone Commercial Service Business C-3. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The, the case before you, as the Chair mentioned, is an extension of time request, a conditional use permit for an expansion of a recreational vehicle park, the Zuni Park, and it's at 2840 Airway Avenue. This was approved for a conditional use permit, as was mentioned, under CUP 22-0007 last year, and the applicants were unable to secure a building permit and, and begin construction, which are the triggers to extend the CUP naturally. So unfortunately, they had to submit an application to, to request an extension of time, which is what is before you. I'll show you a map where it's located. It's on Swing Street and south of Airway, next to the, or west of the existing park, RV Park. And nothing has changed as far as our standards or policies or codes, so we recommend approval of this extension of time, subject to all the original conditions of approval on the previous CUP. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Gary? All right, thank you very much.
And it is a public hearing.
Okay. Sure. I don't know, can we turn it up at all, or?
I'll contact.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any public comments? Nope. Okay, I see none. I am going to close public comment and open it for Commission discussion. Does anybody have any discussion on this item, or do we have a motion?
I really don't see any problem with it. I mean, it's, it's, the area there is all, you know, it's commercial anyway, and they're all expanding, so I don't see a problem with it.
All right, do we have a motion then?
I make a motion to accept CUP 23-004.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any objection?
Chair, could you clarify that the original conditions of approval are still subject to those?
Okay. Is your motion then to approve it with the original conditions?
Yes, I'm sorry. I meant to add that in there. Thank you, Gary. With the, with the staff's agenda, with staff's recommendations.
Great, thank you.
And I'll second that with staff's recommendations.
Okay, great. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss. Approve. Vice Chair Blair.
Approve.
Commissioner Waters.
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn.
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Approve.
Commissioner Swab.
Approve.
Commissioner Noble.
Approve.
Unanimous, motion approved. Great, thank you. All right, next, we're going to move to our second item, which is public hearing, CUP, extension of time request, case CUP 23-0005. This is a request from Dana Sellin, applicant and aquatic construction, on behalf of KMS Holdings LLC, property owner of one-year extension of time for the previously approved conditional use permit, CUP 22-0006, to allow an expansion of a mini storage warehousing facility located on a 5.18 acre parcel, zoned as Commercial Service Business C-3 Zone.
Good afternoon. The case before you is for an extension of time, case number CUP 230005, for the expansion of a mini storage facility located on 3855 Sunshine Drive. The extension of time request is for a previously approved conditional use permit, case number CUP 22-0006, to allow the expansion of a mini storage facility, the property zone C3. Adoption would provide extended, extension until November 28, 2024. This is a general map. All the findings remain the same, so I'm just going to go through this. That's the location. Some site photos. We did receive additional comments this time around from Mojave County Flood Control. They've requested retention basin to retain the full 100-year two-hour rain event and compliance with the Mojave County standards, since it is adjacent, since it is close to the Mojave County unincorporated. This is a conceptual site plan here. These were the initial findings. So staff recommends approval of the extension of time to allow the expansion of the mini storage with the following conditions. Condition 1 through 7, 1 through 26 are the same. 18 has been modified to include E, which states the site must comply with county drainage design standards by retaining the 100-year two-hour storm in an onsite retention basin in accordance with the Mojave County Drainage Standards. Conditions 27 through 29 have been added to comply with our current zoning code and state statutes. Is there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Rosa?
No.
No? All right, thank you so much. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anyone has anything to say on this agenda item, please come forward.
Are you able to hear better? Okay, thank you.
I don't see a problem with this. I mean, the whole area is all commercial, and they're just expanding their area. And they've kept it clean, and as long as they abide or have any problems with what's coming up, I don't see a problem with.
Okay, let me close public comment real quick, and then I will open Commission discussion. Does anybody have any issues, or are you ready for a motion? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept CUP 23-005 with all the conditions stated.
Is that right? That's not right.
Second.
It's, just so we're clear, it's CUP 23-0005?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Give me a second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss. Approve. Vice Chair Blair.
Approve.
Commissioner Waters.
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn.
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Approve.
Commissioner Swab.
Yes.
Commissioner Noble.
Yes.
Motion approved. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, next, we have the agenda item that everyone is here for. That is the public hearing rezoning case RZ 23-0003. This is a request from Travon Pennington, applicant and High Desert Land Holdings LLC, property owner to rezon certain property, modifying the boundaries of existing zones, R-1-20, R-1-10, and R-1-6 residential, single-family, minimum 20,000 square feet and 10,000 square feet and 6,000 square feet lot sizes. Do we have a report from staff? And can you test and see if they can hear you?
Hopefully I speak loud enough that everybody can hear me. Can everybody hear me back there?
They can't.
Go ahead and get a little closer to the microphone.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Mike Rodriguez on the interim Development Services Director. Bear with me while I try to get through this presentation to, on this item. I'm not as familiar with, as it, as staff may be. However, I may have to ask them to come up and clarify some things for you, if there's any questions or comments before you consider the item. As Chair Goss indicated, this is an item that is a rezoned applicant by Travon Pennington and Desert Land Holdings to rezone a portion of this previously approved and zoned tract, parts of that in this area that, of R120, R110, and R16 residential lots. What the applicant is asking for is to add, or actually to, to increase the R16 zoning from 17.13 acres to, from 30, add an additional 17.13 acres of R16 zoning from the original 35.35 acres to 52.48, and asking for a decrease in the R110 zoning by 17.13 acres, the same amount of, of the rezoned area that's being considered. So they're reducing the, the R110 zoning from just under 24 acres to little, little less than seven, so 23.98 to 6.85.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Is there a presentation that goes on the slides as well? Thanks, just so we can follow you along easier.
And that's why I thought that I'd be asking staff to, to help you with that. We're going to look at the general information on the second slide. Okay, so these are the slides here. I think I can do that. Here we go.
Thank you so much.
And the, the R120 zoning area will, will remain the same. It's not being, that's not being proposed to be changed at all. As I indicated, the, the, that will, by, by this rezon taking place, the applicant has, has expressed that it would only add an additional 12 lots in the R16 zoning area, so the R110 area would, would be significantly reduced. However, the buffer of the R120 zoning and those half-acre lots, half-acre or more lots that adjoin the R140 zone, zone homes that currently exist, that buffer is going to remain the same. So most, most of this, in this action, would just occur in the, in the, the middle of the subject property. You can see the subject property there is, is to the west of Seneca Road, north of Walupai Mountain Road, and east of Yavapai Road. Here's where the zoning is being changed from, the, the map on the left shows the R110 zoning that will then be proposed to be all R16 with a buffer of R120 along the side, the R1, I don't see where the R110 is going to remain, but maybe the applicant or the staff can help clarify that. There was an addendum that was added to this package after communication with the applicant. The conditions, the, the first condition on, on the staff recommendation, we just changed some of the language and the wording for the, the minimum of three acres of usable open space. That's, you can see that on the, on the, the reported addendum that includes the recommendation that the open space improvements should be designed, constructed, and maintained by the developer. There was some other language in there that wasn't, we, we didn't believe was applicable, so that, that was stricken through our discussions.
So you need to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Is that better? And I think, you know, that's, that's the extent of my presentation. The applicant is here to be able to answer questions or provide additional information from their perspective, and I see that we do have a number of members of the public that are here to, to speak on the item as well. As, as Gary had indicated, I indicated previously, the staff is available to help clarify some of this as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions before he sits down? The staff recommendations, you can scoot down there, page 11 of 34 on that. Can you read through what the staff recommendations are for the Commission? Just so that we can all hear them.
The recommendations, as, as you can see on the addendum page, we've just left the one, one recommendation there, however, I believe there may be two others that we may need to take into consideration. I just read the one based on the submitted application and public input. Staff analysis was able to find that the proposed amendment to the zoning map complies with the required criteria of the Kingman zoning code. Therefore, planning staff recommends that the Commission recommend approval of modifying the existing residential zoning district boundaries of the subject properties proposed, subject to the following condition of approval. Number one, the property shall be developed with a minimum of three acres of usable open space or park space within the subject development. The open space improvements shall be designed, constructed, and maintained by the developer. That was the one recommendation that staff had had in a last-minute discussion with the applicant. However, there were a couple of other recommendations that were previously written, and I may have to rely on Gary to be able to clarify that. That's regarding the left turn lane off of Walupai Mountain Road onto Yavapai Drive. I don't see that in my package here. That's why I'm asking for his help. We don't have a written condition, is why I'm asking. Intersection. This was from the previous. Conditions 3 and 4 would still be requested to be applied. Items 1 and 2, one has been stricken, and the other one's been modified. So I refer to your addendum for the one condition, and then refer to 3 and 4 for the added conditions mainly from city engineering.
Do you know what page the addendum conditions are on? We're just trying to find.
The addendum is actually on your, on your second page. It just shows that one, one recommendation, one recommended condition. And I apologize, but I'm not finding the other conditions, 3 and 4, that Gary was referring to. On page 11 of 34, we see the two, the, the two conditions as they were previously written.
Yeah, Gary, we only have the two conditions on our paper.
Just to eject this for a second. So when, when we wrote the original staff report for the October meeting, we had gone over the analysis, including the conditions that engineering wanted. We forgot to put those at the end of the staff report.
Okay.
So there were only two listed, not the entire four that included the two engineering comments as well. For that meeting that night, I had put it into the PowerPoint to let you guys know that I had forgotten those two and, and to apply those.
Okay, so these are.
So that's why they show up here.
Okay.
However, now, the first two conditions have been changed. One is eliminated and one is modified. But number 3 and 4 are the ones that were erroneously left out of the staff report. So refer to your addendum to address numbers 1 and 2, I guess, and then 3 and 4 would be as written here. If that makes sense.
Okay. Can we just leave this slide up then?
We'll leave this slide up here for your consideration. That way you can review that, and then, yes. Just want to make sure, clear that for the audience and others, numbers 1 and 2, they're not, those aren't the same as what's being shown on the wall there. They're different now.
Okay.
Well, could you clarify that, Gary? So wanting to, we see up here are.
What you see up there were the, were the four conditions that were written in the previous action that was going to take place back at the, the last meeting when this item was pulled in, in November or October. Since then, with, from discussions that we've had with the applicant, we agreed to strike condition number 2, as it's written here. That's not, that's not up for consideration at this point in time unless the Commission wants to, to reintroduce that. Condition number 1, the language has just been modified briefly, as it's stated in the addendum on your page 2. As Gary's indicating, conditions 3 and 4 are up for consideration by the Commission because they were, they were eliminated or forgotten to, to be included in, in the staff report.
Mike, could you just clarify which bullets, 1 through 4, if they're, that the staff is recommending?
Yes, so item number 1, it's being replaced by the, the language in, in addendum, in the addendum, recommendation 1.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
So 1 and 2 are on page 11 of our addendum, and those are the correct 1 and 2.
No.
Right?
No. Yes, item, on, on page 11, what you have is, is recommended, recommended items, conditions 1 and 2. However, the addendum has changed that so that item number 1 is as written on this addendum page, and number, item number 2 on the screen is eliminated. So one, this is getting confusing, no doubt.
Very confusing, yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, we just, can you do that? That would be a big help. Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to jump in here on this, okay? So what we see on the screen is, is not what the recommendations are. The recommendations that staff is, is recommending is recommendation number 1 from the addendum, and number 3 and 4 on the PowerPoint.
So while we're having this discussion, Gary is trying to change it so that it can be more easily seen on the screen.
Is, Sean, is 2 from page 11 still up for?
No, the only recommendations that staff is making is recommendation 1 from the addendum, which is right here, the property shall be developed, blah, blah, blah. All right, the property shall be developed with a minimum of three acres of usable open space, or?
Park space.
Or park spaces within the subject development. The open space is, the open space improvement shall be designed, constructed, and equipped by the developer. And that coupled with number 3 and number 4 from this page are what staff is recommending.
Apologize for the confusion, but this, this was being done kind of last minute, and because of my lack of familiarity with some of this, it, it got overlooked. And that's why we're trying to clarify it for the Commission at this meeting tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
So it is, it may be a little bit lengthier to try to get through this, this, this presentation, but that, that's the reasons why. It's, a lot of it is because of my, just my lack of familiarity with everything that we've got going on right now. But I'll get up to speed soon, I hope. Okay? One, number 1's duplicated numerically, but those are the conditions. So these are the, the three conditions that Gary has just edited and, and revised and put up on the screen. Those are the recommendations that staff's making for this, for this project. So we're recommending approval with these conditions.
Okay, thank you so much.
As, as I stated earlier, the applicant is here. No doubt, they may not want to provide some input and answer some questions, provide additional information, and then staff will try to help clarify things as best we can.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a question.
Chair Goss. Yeah.
Could we, we actually haven't been through the entire presentation because it's been canceled. So we are not familiar with, with much of this information. So I'm wondering if someone would be able to go through the entire presentation and what the, like, what the implications are for road.
If the, if the Commissioners would like to have a more clarified presentation, Gary's the one who's most familiar with that, and I'll ask him to come up here and do that for you.
I, I would like that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Chair Goss.
For both the Commission and for the, the public.
Sorry, I have a question for Chair Goss. I have a question for Mr. Garcia. Earlier, you mentioned that there was the transition area in that it wouldn't be changed. I believe you said that as like an aside almost. But I'm, I'm looking at this figure 1, and I do see that the transition area in the, it looks like the second plan is going to be changed. That's in figure 1. So I just want to clarify that going forward.
Is this, is this the slide you're referring to?
The one I'm referring to it as a side-by-side with two different.
That one?
Yeah, that one right there. So that, just to be clear, that the second one is the one we're talking about right now, where there will be a reduction of that transition zone between the 6 and the 20.
Yes, the slide on the left is what was, what's existing, and the slide on the right is what's being proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll wait for Gary. Thanks. Thank you, Gary. We appreciate you.
Appreciate Mike giving a, an introduction there. So as we mentioned, this has gone over already. There's a subject property that involves three different zones, R120, R110, and R16. Am I not close enough? The R, the R120 refers to 20,000 square foot lot minimums. 10 refers to the 10,000 square foot lot minimums, and then 6 refers to a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. We've gone over the applicant and owner information. The requested action is to modify those existing boundaries because there are all three zones on the subject property as we speak. It's not built. It's all open land right now, but the zones are already applied there, the three zones. What their applicant is asking for is to modify those boundaries such that the R16 zone goes from 35 to 52 acres, an increase of 17 acres. That results in a decrease of what is already zoned as R110 by 17, the equal amount, 17 acres, from 23 acres down to 7 acres, 24 acres down to 7 acres. The portion that's already zoned R120 remains unchanged, and that's 12.84 acres. Pie chart there is just another visual in case people in the audience are accountants, and they like pie charts. So it just is a visual to show you the percentages, proportions that are going on here. We understand where the subject property is? Hopefully, you know? And this, this to me was the best visual I could come up with. And we had to recreate it from information the applicant provided. It's not based on a legal description, but we did our best. And so the left side is what is existing. That's what's on the city's adopted zoning map today.
And so the left side is what is existing. That's what's on the city's adopted zoning map today. What on the right is the proposed zoning, and that shows you exactly where, given some minor errors, where the R one six is expanding, the R one ten in that darker green is shrinking, and then how the R one twenty zone is remaining the same, which is on the east side of, which abuts the Walupi subdivision, Walupi Mountain Estates. Foothills Estates. So let me know, and I can come back to this slide anytime you want, because this is, this is it. This tells everything, so. This is the subject property showing the general land use, the general plan land map. The eastern side of the property is zoned for a lower density, which is reflected in the R one twenty. The remainder of the property is that flesh colored, I'm not sure what color that is, with the star on it, and that is all designated for a little bit higher density and would support R one ten and R one six zoning. And that's all, along with the entire area to the east and north is also zoned MDR, or not zoned, designated as medium density residential, which is that three to eight dwelling units per acre. This is the zoning map that we have online that everybody can look at. It shows the current zoning, R one six, R one ten, R one twenty. Here is a utility map showing that the water and sewer mains are accessible and obviously will need to be extended throughout the subdivision. And then some street improvements that will be required per the city engineering conditions. And then at the lower left in that little cloud shaped thing that shows the intersection there of Yavapai Drive and Walupi Mountain Road, which will will need a left turn lane installed. And then the hundred foot right away, there's a hundred foot feet of right away, but only twenty-seven to thirty-three feet of it is paved, so it's fairly narrow. Surrounding property owners were notified, actually numerous times. But for this meeting, they were noticed on twelve twenty-six. They were sent by first class mail. Site was also posted the day after Christmas. The public notice was in the Kingman Minor Newspaper. It ran on the twentieth of December. And the comments we have received are in your packet. And we did receive a petition of sorts. It includes twelve names, but there are no signatures on on the petition. It states on that petition, no, we do not want R one six homes building behind us. There are plenty of vacant lots for you to build on what won't block our view. The addresses are west of the subject, subject property, so when I looked at the map and the actual addresses, obviously they're referring to their view to the east, which would be the Walupi Mountains. There is a lot of chatter. I can't even hear myself, so. Yeah, I went over that and the, mentioned that the properties I looked at as part of this petition, I wanted to see where those properties were located, what views might be referring to, and that appears to be to the east of the Walupi Mountains. An email from Elliot Chalou. He wrote, I'm writing to express my displeasure with this proposal and urge a no vote from you. There were other comments gathered by the applicant during the neighborhood meetings that were held and are included in the staff report. But I also wanted to write down the topics of concern that were mentioned. It mentioned roads, town water supply running out, larger lots needed, concern about multifamily housing, utility easements, stormwater runoff, concern about homes less than thirteen hundred square feet, traffic into Walupi Foothills subdivision, construction noise, effect on property values, needs block walls, no chain link, resource concerns such as power, water, sewer, and traffic, and a decrease in property values that was repeated, and then traffic on Walupi Mountain Road and flooding in the area. As of one ten, additional comments, January tenth today, the additional comments have been received and I mentioned in here will be handed out at the commission. I later found out that the comments that were submitted in the last day were included in your revised staff report. But there may have been a few that were submitted after that even, that hopefully we were able to pass out to each of the commission members. We want to make sure you have everybody's comment from the public that we were able to keep track of. We had city engineering comments that are incorporated into the staff, into the staff staff recommended conditions of approval. Building, no objections, but they want to ensure some hydrant distances and access. That it complies with code. The flood control district, they want to make sure that drainage conveyance capacity be maintained for hundred year flows. And that comment was forwarded to engineering for when we review their subdivision. Unisource Energy's had no objection, but they want to work with the applicant to to help plan service. And then no objection from what was Sudden Link, now Optimum, and Frontier Communications. Uh, this is the intersection that I referred to earlier that the city engineer had mentioned will require a left turn lane. This is the subject property. So generally, it looks flat out there, but there is some relief there with, and drainage channels. Here's the subject property looking from Yavapai Drive. So improved sidewalks and street on the right side there, and the Walupi Mountains on the left. And I can always come back to these if you need me to. This is from Seneca Street. Uh, the applicant did hold two public meetings back in June on the eighth and tenth, and I mentioned some of those comments and the general concerns that came up. And the summary of the meeting is included in in your staff report, and as I mentioned earlier. Uh, the purpose of the request obviously is to increase the number of land that is zoned for six thousand square foot lots, so they can provide a subdivision that would have six thousand square foot lots rather than the ten thousand square foot. The rezoning, of course, requires an analysis, and that begins at the bottom. Basically, that it conforms to the goals in general plan. It does, as I mentioned, showing you the map, medium density residential does support R one six and R one ten. And then the low density residential supports the R one twenty on the east side, which remains unchanged. The proposed amendment is consistent and conforms with the goals of the general plan and any applicable specific plans. So we brought up the parks, open space trails, and recreation master plan, went over this. Just the original, when this was originally rezoned, the commission and council at that time applied a condition of approval that required acreage for open space, usable open space. So this was just going into that analysis a little bit, showing you what what the city currently has, what's being proposed. I won't go over that. The proposed amendment is will conform with the goals of the general plan. I don't know how to go over this. I don't know, Mike, how do you want to? I don't, the road connectivity issue, I don't know, do you want to do about that? But it's part of the analysis that I did, so I don't know. Okay, we'll skip the road connectivity. As a minimum, regardless of any, that's that's same thing, so I'll skip that. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest or health. The proposed increase of R one six by seventeen acres, I mentioned would, R one twenty would stay the same. R one six to R one ten is consistent with the MDR designation. As development occurs, the network of streets and utilities will be enhanced. That's based on road connectivity to the public good by providing connectivity of the systems and looping redundancies. Important to, for predictability of services and accessibility to emergency services. An improved sidewalk and street network will allow citizens to have several transportation options for accessing the property. That is vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian. The city engineer has proposed conditions that further address this criterion. The suitability of the site, the site is physically suitable for residential land uses. Site is relatively flat, flat, we talked about that. Site has access to city water and sewer. Site development will require upgrades and expansions to all the systems. Any site development will be reviewed against all relevant and adopted city codes and standards. So as conditioned, this, this criterion is met. Based on the submitted applications, submitted public input, the staff analysis was able to find the proposed amendment to the zoning map with conditions to, so that it complies with the zoning code section two five fifty oh one oh C five. The planning staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of modifying the existing zoning zoning district boundaries of the subject property as proposed, subject to the conditions of approval that have been modified by staff. Which would not be these, this, this. So I can go back to any slide you'd like, and actually, I'm glad we did this last slide. We can all stay on the same page, but if you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Gary.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah, Chair Goss. I know there's a, there's a Walupi Mountain Road corridor, what is this, a neighborhood planning area? But it's, just to clarify, this, this particular development wouldn't be impacted by that, right?
You're referring to the neighborhood planning areas in the general plan?
The general plan, yeah. Walupi Mountain Road corridor, NPA number three?
Yeah, since I've been here over four years, we have not applied that consistently from the general plan, so actually in the new general plan, our consultants are removing that. Because it's confusing, I guess, which I agree. So I couldn't answer that question without doing some research.
Well, there is some language in there on preserving views, and that's what I hear a lot of these people talking about. But it seems like it ends at eastern, but there's a buffer of a quarter mile, I believe. So I just wasn't sure if that was putting some more restrictions on developments.
Not unless it's, if it's in the general plan, unless it's codified, it's generally not really enforceable, so.
Okay.
Unless you make a finding that it doesn't comply with the general plan and then kind of hinges on that, so.
All right, thank you, Gary.
But generally, they're codified if it's something the council really wants to apply and it's measurable and something we can apply to each development.
I got a couple things for just clarification. Can you pull up that side by side picture one more time?
Page one.
So I just want to make sure I completely understand this. So this fits the general plan, and the one on the left is already approved. That's, that's ready to go, it's zoned that way. Those houses can be built like that with just going through the process. Is that correct?
That's the current zoning.
That's the current zoning. So simply, so those houses can be built no matter what. So alls we're talking about is, and what, what is the difference in lots? Do we know? I thought I, I thought somebody said it. The number of lots between the left and the right photo.
I did a density analysis in the staff report. When you rezone property, you want to know what are the maximum amount of of lots. The applicant asserts that they're proposing something less than that, which they can address. But nevertheless, this is not a planned unit development. This is a rezone, so we have to tell you what the maximum allowable densities are. So they may propose less, but because this is a straight zoning, if they sold the property tomorrow, someone could propose something different, so.
So in this report, it says max, it says seven ninety-four versus seven oh six. So we're talking about eighty-eight, eighty-eight lots extra. I just wanted to clarify that.
But, well, whatever's in the staff report.
Pop, that's population, sorry. Yeah, it looks like lots.
Too many, right?
Yeah, lots one eighty-five and two seventy-three.
Yeah, I have a, I have a table on page ten of the staff report.
I got a calculator right here.
So the current zoning, per the table that I provided, the current zoning could provide
Yeah, that's right.
Up to a population of seven oh six. That's everybody in a household in that subdivision. That's what the current zoning would allow if it was maxed out at all the densities that are currently allowed. The proposed would be seven ninety-four as far as actual people in that subdivision that could be proposed. That's not lots. So that's important to to know.
Oh, but this is the difference.
The proposed lots go from one eighty-five to two seventy-three of R one six lots. That again is zoning, not what they're proposing in maybe a subdivision plan. This is just straight zoning densities.
So are, am I interpreting this correctly that there would be an increase only of ninety people with almost a hundred additional lots?
Well, look at the analysis, it's there. It's not, it's not. Well, no, don't, it's an analysis that was done. You're decreasing the amount of R one ten zoning and increasing the R one six zoning. It is more people. That's pretty clear there.
Well, it's lots, sorry, that's so thirty-five more lots. That's close to what there's. Yeah.
Yeah, this was an objective analysis done by your professional planner on staff who's done this for decades, so I hope you find what you need in that table and drill me with questions, because we can always be subject to error, but
Do you have that table?
My goal is to advise you and the council on what's being proposed.
Is that table by chance in your slideshow?
No.
It would be on page seventy-eight of the staff report.
Okay, does anyone else have questions for staff, or, because we can mull over some of this in commission discussion if you want?
I do have some questions. Thank you for spending the time to come up and go through that slideshow. That was really helpful. Do you know how many lots or how many homes are built on the, on the west side of Yavapai in that R one six zoning area that's shown on that map right there? By any chance, like when you were going through your analysis, did you calculate that?
I actually made a bunch of maps with densities for different neighborhoods in there, to see if anything popped out, and because of space and everything, I didn't include all that, but I did do, during my review of this and analysis, I did look at all those neighborhoods, see what kind of densities they're at currently. I just didn't, it's only so much we can provide in here. Only so much that's, you know, appropriate to shove into this, this PowerPoint for you guys.
Okay, so off the top of your head, do you remember on the west side? Okay. I'm going to go back to this Dakota thing. Would would there be an entrance and exit off of Dakota?
The subdivision to the east required it with their subdivision to stub out to the west. Otherwise, their block length would be over a mile long, which at the time it was only seventeen hundred and sixty was the maximum. If a stub out is not provided, then from from Walupi Mountain Road up to I'm losing the road, but it's over a mile, so that's, in order to avoid having a mile long block length, they provided two stub outs to property that would develop on the west, which is the subject property. So.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand that.
So yes, this, there would be a stub out to the east, whether it's road, full pedestrian type connectivity, that's required by the subdivision. We didn't, we removed that from the conditions of approval.
What would the entrances and exits be in this subdivision?
That would be various, basically all along the north, west sides of the property. Nothing to the south and nothing to the east.
So, and if I may, that, that would be a matter for the subdivision plat that would come forward to you. Currently, right now, this is for the rezoning only.
Okay. Thank you. I was a little bit confused about the open space area. I saw, number one of the proposal was that there would be a three acre open space area. But then I thought that I saw that per city plan, it would be appropriate to have a seven point six two acre open space area?
That's, that's part of the analysis I did. It's just basically saying that when this was approved, it was going from very large lots, rural sized lots, parcels in fact, down to these much smaller lots. During that time, through the public process, it was decided by the decision makers to require a three acre minimum open space, usable open space area. The analysis I provided was basically saying if the commission chose to do so, this could be increased because they're increasing the number of lots from what was originally negotiated with the developer and the decision makers and in fact, the neighbors. So that's only to say, the three acres is fine, but it was based on X percentage of lots possible at that time. So if you want to go higher, you can, I don't necessarily recommend it. It's just that way you could be up to the, more of the NRPA standards and what the city should be at standards. So that's up to you, I didn't provide much, much as a, as a condition of approval for that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I might mention that we, we really need to work with the developers on, we're getting subdivisions that have these fenced off detention ponds that are deep and they're not safe. Most of the time, probably just from hillside, you know what I'm talking about, but you know, it's detention ponds. But we really need to find out a way to incorporate these open space areas with more shallow detention pond areas so that they function for the neighborhood and they function for stormwater. Rather than build the more cost efficient, deeper hole. Because it's our requirement to do these detention ponds, it would really, be really nice if we could find that balance and get a win for the neighborhoods, future neighborhoods, and the developer can, can also provide those detention pond areas.
I agree.
Right, any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, because then that would count towards the usable open space if it was actually unfenced and a shallow area, so. Thank you, sorry.
No, thank you, Gary. Alright, it looks like we're good, thank you so much, Gary.
Thank you.
Alright, I am going to open us up to public discussion. We can talk to the developer first if you want. Okay, the first person that I want to call up is the developers, just so that we can hear from them and then we'll start out with everybody else.
Thank you, chairperson and commissioners, my name is Tyler Engel. I am the president of Engel Homes and, and the entity that's submitting for this rezone. The, the reason why we're asking for the rezone is simply a price issue. So for this area, we actually submitted a preliminary plat about a year ago to staff and got the first round of comments back. And about that time, we realized the R ten segment is actually our worst selling product. Once we put a house on it and offer it to the public. So R eight and R ten are slowest selling. Those homes end up being around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably on average. And we have a bunch of lots right now that are sitting, some finished being developed, some platted and ready to move dirt and some partly developed in the R eight and R ten lot size. So for, for all the numbers to work out for me, I have to put a, a medium sized home on that and that ends up being a price with an average of four fifty. So with that, with our realization that that's our, our slowest selling product, that's not what the, the public wants as much as a, a lower cost product that more people can afford. We looked at this and are taking most of that R one ten section, which according to our, our plat that we'd already submitted, was fifty-one or fifty-two homes that are the, the ten thousand square foot lots. And so we're asking you to change that to allow us to build fifty-one homes at four hundred and fifty thousand to adding twelve more. So go from fifty-one to sixty-three and those would probably be more with, with an average price around three forty. So that's all we're asking. I'm not asking for any exceptions, I'm not asking you to do the subdivision. I'm just asking for this change to do either fifty-one at four hundred and fifty thousand. So if you say no, that's what I'm gonna do. And, and the, the subdivision in total is two hundred and thirty-three lots. That's some of the stuff we tried to get clarified with staff, but had a hard time getting in the, the report for some reason, so. The current ones, two hundred and thirty-three lots, we already submitted once, we already have comments back on that. We're wanting to just cha, take fifty-one of those out and replace it with sixty-three that are a little bit smaller so that we can sell them, that's what the, the public is telling us they want. That's what we're selling more quickly at, at Engel Homes. We had eighty percent of the city's home building permits last year. So we, we have a feel for what people are wanting that are buying new homes in, in Kingman. Most of them are, are buying from us and we're the one that's trying to develop and put the product out there so people can, can move here. So it's really a supply and demand thing and a cost thing. When, when the, the cost of construction has, has gone up so much over the last five or six years, people have slid down on the size of the home and the size of the lot to fit their, their budget and what can, they can do with their, their mortgage. A lot of the other surrounding discussions are really, like was mentioned at the subdivision plat phase, where we submit a plat and the engineer tells us you need to make a water connection or Walupi Mountain Road needs a turn. We already have those comments, they're, they're at the preliminary plat phase, so to, to put them on here too, doesn't really matter, because it, that's in the next step anyway. But, but yeah, so that's, that's why we're doing it. There's no, no, nothing done evenly or there's no big scheme, it's just that's what people are buying and so we, we're just wanting to ask to add twelve, twelve lots to go from two thirty-three to two forty-five.
Does anybody have any questions for applicant?
I do. Thank you for your time. I'm a little bit, I'm trying to like think about these numbers in my mind. So the R ten is about a quarter of an acre, right?
E roughly, yeah.
Okay, and then the R six would then be a little bit more than an eighth of an acre. Little bit more.
R six, uh, yeah.
Little, it's a
Yeah. The city, the, the acre things, acre, city acre is forty thousand, a true acre is actually technically more than that, so it gets a little. But yeah, if you use forty and ten, and then six, yeah. Little, little bigger than half of a ten thousand.
So what my brain is trying to sort out, and forgive me for my imperfect communication here, is that we're changing the, the R ten to R six, which is almost half the size. So it seems like the potential exists there to build probably not double the number of houses, but probably thirty-five percent more houses. Is that, am I doing the math right there? The potential exists to do that?
In the staff report, there's a map with a red section. If you look at that one, that shows where our initial lot lines were gonna be. It, it shows the little lots in there. And so we went in and tried to figure out how many we could fit if we changed it and we only got to the number twelve. So we can only fit twelve more by moving the lines around and keeping all the required setbacks and, and keeping according to the, to the zoning laws. Maybe if you were doing them perfectly straight or didn't have retention or didn't have roads, then the math would work differently, but because it's kind of a weird shape and where the lot lines are, you, you can't, can't do the math perfectly clean and so we could only get twelve in there.
My, my name's Travis.
We speak into the mic.
Towards the end of your staff packet, and the reason I know it's in your staff packet is I printed it off the city website.
Can, can you speak into the microphone?
There was a letter that we submitted to staff and it was addressed to the zoning commission, so I hope you guys got the letter. But it was on December, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We submitted this letter and we were asking that a condition be added, right? That a condition tonight, if this rezone is successful, to limit, like, limit our subdivision to two forty-five. We're not trying to get more than two forty-five, we're willing to commit to the twelve that we're talking about. We believe that's the real number, that's the maximum out we can get from an engineering standpoint. And we're willing to go on, have you guys take us to task and add that as a condition. So if that is a big concern of everybody up here, you know, we don't have to take too much time, make it as part of the condition, right? We're willing to be, that was our original intent.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So with the original existing zoning then, are you saying that the maximum number of houses would be two thirty-three?
Yes.
That's what we had submitted on our initial one, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's really helpful.
Alright, does anybody else have a question? Gary, can you turn on your microphone?
Don't want to make anybody out there mad. You guys set up the, the site plat, you know, plat out the subdivision, basically get, get all your properties. You, you, you set the values for these properties. And I assume that you're, you're targeting some sort of a land value. How are you coming up with that land value that influences like, say, how you, you sell these? What price you sell these R one tens for? What are you using to come up with that value? You're saying that they're, I mean, you're setting the value for these properties, you're putting them up for sale. You know, and, and you're saying, at the same time, you're saying that they're, they're not in demand, but you're setting the price. So I'm just kind of curious, like what methodology are you using to come up with that?
The short answer would be it's complicated. But you take, take everything into effect, just like any business owner sets any price. You, you want to get rid of your product, but not price it so low that you run out of product. And, and you wanna, you have to be able to make money when you sell your product. If you're making too much money, then the price gets too high, people don't want your, your product and that invites more competition. So, so the market, you know, is complicated. The, the Adam Smith, the economist, that there's invisible hand that takes care of all that, right? The pricing and where it's at, but, but we try to adjust to, to the market and, and we want to keep things as affordable as we can for, for the public. That's why we design the subdivisions a certain way, because we're trying to, to keep the, the costs affordable for us and, and then for our, our customers, so.
I think I understand, but at the same time, there's the price of hookups for each individual. You know, you, you have, you're basically putting some infrastructure in for each lot, right? Like you're investing in, in building things, improvements on the earth for these new lots that you're, you're filling out with improvements. Building a, allocating more of a buffer around that property isn't really costing you much. And in the open market, people tend to, tend to want more space between properties, right?
No.
Well, let me, let me continue. That neighborhood is, is economic area oh one oh seven, that's the, that's the economic sub area of Kingman. I can tell you right now, the median land to, to improvement ratio is seventeen percent land to, you know, the residual, which is the, the improvement, the improvement. So what I'm getting at with that little metric is that the land is, is a pretty small chunk of the value associated with that, with those values in that area. So again, like, you're saying that these aren't demand. If I'm somebody out in the, if I'm somebody looking at a property to buy, I'm gonna want a larger lot. I could see somebody buying the one ten if you price it correctly, you know, for them to sell. So maybe I'm just missing something, it seems like it's up to you kind of to sell these things by maybe allocating the price.
If I priced the R ten lots as the same as the R six lots, certainly all of us would pick those first if we were the, the buyer. If they were the same price, you pick the bigger one. But, but you can't price them that way because the costs are higher. One way to think about it is the improvement costs for the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, curbs, the water, sewer, electrical. For these fifty-one houses that we're gonna be in this area, say that's five hundred thousand dollars. Well, I'm trying to divide that by a bigger number so I can spread those costs more so that it's cheaper for everyone, it's cheaper for me per lot and then it's cheaper for you per lot. So I, I'm just trying to, to cut, divide the cost a little bit more, to cut the cost, to save everyone money and, and decrease the cost overall.
I also see another incentive and that's to, to make the neighborhoods as dense as possible and still charge as much for the improvement, which again is the residual, you, you subtract the seventeen percent, basically. You have a vast majority of your lot, lot prices being the improvement. So, I mean, I, I understand there's like one way to look at it to where you want to provide the best product to the customer. You, I could also see this company trying to basically make it as dense as possible, which might not be what these people that are here today want to happen in their neighborhood. So I, what, what I'm trying to say is that you kind of have a hand in it and setting the prices to make these R tens sell. That's just my observation, anyway, thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
I have another question. Can you help us understand the Dakota Road thing and why that was pulled out and that's one of the things that I'm wondering about is we're talking about having, and I know that that's something that comes up later, but it also has implications right now. We're talking about two hundred plus homes going out onto Yavapai Road.
Yeah, um.
And there are, there are, there are tons of children who ride bikes and walk and people who walk dogs.
Point of order, please.
People who, elderly people who walk along there, so I'm, it's already, I already, when I'm walking on that road, I'm cautious with my children. I'm just wondering what's gonna happen when there are two hundred plus more homes pulling out onto Yavapai.
Gotcha. So the connection to, to Dakota, there, there's a few things there. One is that where you can kind of see that space that's the, the biggest unshaded area, yeah. Is a, is a wash there. We talked to some of the residents around there and they don't want that, the people that live on Seneca. They think putting a road over there would be, you know, it invites traffic in front of their house, right? If your house is on the corner, you wouldn't want it there. So a large part of the people close to that, that area don't, don't want a connection there to increase traffic and people next to their, their houses. The other thing is cost again, so we already have three entrances to the subdivision, you need two entrances. Adding this would make four entrances when, when you only need two. And, and this one would be an expensive one because of the washes. You'd have to do some kind of culverts or, or bridge situation likely there because of the, how much water's coming through. We have planned on this side is, is one of our basins is right there to catch the water, is what the engineered plans have right now, because the water's coming in there. So we'd have to, to change that and, and put in a road with expensive road and curb and drainage infrastructure, because it's not just a flat, flat area to, to put over there. And then you're making the neighbors mad over there.
Yeah, I think part of the reason I'm asking about how many houses are on the west side of Yavapai is because there are entrances and exits on both Yavapai and also Central for
for almost, not all of those roads, but almost every one of those roads. So it makes it not as congested on Yavapai. It makes it so that people have a lot more options for getting out. I under, I can understand why it would be expensive, and I can also understand why the people on Dakota, it's not Dakota, what is that, Seneca? Why the people on Seneca would also not be happy about another road.
Yeah, yeah, Seneca's busy too, and no sidewalks or anything on Seneca. It's probably less safe of a road than, than Yavapai, but...
But there also aren't as many people who are walking on that road as there are who walk on Yavapai.
Yeah, that could be.
Letter that I mentioned last time I stood up. The letter that I mentioned the last time I stood up, submitted on November fourteenth. The bottom paragraph, and the kind of address was our version of what he said regarding Dakota, is that we've met the minimum, we've required three. But we also talked about, we do agree that a pedestrian, bicycle, pedestrian-friendly path connecting with a connection from Yavapai to Seneca. At some point, we're, we, we are committed to providing that pedestrian slash bicycle traffic through this subdivision. We just don't know the exact place. Maybe that's at Dakota as well.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Yes, sorry. And maybe it is at Dakota where that, that pedestrian bicycle path needs to be connected.
Thank you. Does anyone have any more questions? No? All right, thank you so much.
All right, I am going to open it up to our public. I'm going to ask Clark Rosas to come back up. I apologize for last time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Rancho Santa Fe. And I would like to express, express my displeasure and opposition to this zoning change. One thing I can see is that I, I would have liked to see a, a proposed subdivision map showing the lots, so we can actually see what's, what we're looking at as far as the impact of, of the new homes. Now, I'm sure that this is going to be a lot better for the builder as far as his, as his profits, but it's going to affect me as far as the value of my property and, and the, the impact of the traffic. And I'm really not interested in having the area developed as a high-density, you know, affordable housing area. You know? And that's basically it, you know? I'm sure the developer, if you, if the developer cut these lots into three thousand foot, square foot lots, and put those little tiny homes, like in Texas, four to six hundred square feet, I'm sure Betty could sell a whole bunch of them, just sell them all day long. Divide it down a little bit further, and maybe put some trailers on it, you know? And another thing, if you do this, if you, if you give this zoning change like this, and I don't know if it's already a done deal, because I saw the recommendation up on the board there that this be passed. But if you, if you do this like this, and continue, continue along, it's setting a precedent for the next piece of land to be, to be chopped up and, and made smaller. And that changes the whole socioeconomic nature of this neighborhood that I live in. And I've got mu, not much more to say except that. That's, that's it in a nutshell, and I urge this, this board to vote against this. The builder's got a nice piece of land there, he's got plenty of R, R-one-six. He can build his little homes there, and the rest ought to stay bigger lots, bigger homes. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sure, gossip, I may. It seems like you're going to have a significant number of the public that are going to be commenting on this. Just want to remind you about the three-minute rule, so that we don't lose track of that.
Correct. We have a three-minute rule. There's a little device up there on the front. I don't know if any of you guys saw it, but it turns green when you start talking. And when you get to three minutes, you'll see the little red buzzer go off. And it'll just let you guys know where you are in the talking, so. But the next person that I have is Elliot, it's Chalou, maybe? Great, thank you so much. Careful, please approach the podium.
I'm stable and safe, thank you. It's a privilege to be here. My name is Elliot Chalou. And we came to Kingman almost five years ago. What attracted us was a smaller community. In those short, in that short eye blink of almost five years, we've seen an explosion of residential buildings. We've seen land being oversaturated by those buildings. We've seen a tremendous increase of traffic on the, on the streets and the entryways available to us. What I almost heard was the builder proposing that the commissioners help the sale of buildings by making the buildings less expensive. Well, I, I, at least, that's what I think I've heard. And I think the people who originally zoned this had a good plan in mind. If people want larger homes, they can go to a larger area. I, I think all of this, or it seems to me that all of this is geared to the profit-taking by the speculative, by the speculative business of real estate sale and home building in sale. And I don't know why we should bear the brunt of that speculation by allowing more of this to occur in a very limited area. I don't think it's right. I think it's dead wrong. This is not what attracted us to the community. This is no longer a sleepy community. It's everyone awake all the time, and that's not why we moved here. And I, I don't know if I speak for others, but I hope I do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jim St. Pierre. Thank you so much.
Good evening. You're going to hear tonight all the things that I had on my list here, and so I won't reiterate all of them. The one thing I did hear tonight, I heard a lot of things I didn't already know about. But one of them was the left-hand turn lane on Walupai Mountain Road. That's really not going to do any good, if you think about it. Right there at the church, it narrows down to one lane coming up that road. That's just going to stack up during rush hour, because you're going to have all these extra homes. Now, looking at this map, I honestly didn't know till tonight that we already had some, what's the smaller lot? The R-one-six lots, right? But Angle Homes was saying they're not selling the half-acre lots. What keeps him from coming back here in six months and saying, "Well, you know what? Those half acres aren't going to be a hot item for us." So we want to rezone the entire piece to R-one-six. They can say they're not going to do that, but if you approve this, you set a precedent for not just this piece of property, but for the next one and the next one. And the R-one-six, the six thousand square foot parcels of land, they're less expensive homes, but they also invite rentals. They also invite other things into the neighborhood. And I'm not saying rentals are necessarily bad, but we all know that permanent homeowners are a better environment in a neighborhood than rentals. And so I just give you that to think about as well. I'm just going to share with you a brief story about the place we came from. Rancho Cucamonga, California. We moved from there. When my wife and I moved there, we didn't even have a police department. The CHP come up from the ten freeway and drove through town twice a day. When we left, there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand people in the town. And largely in part because of Lewis Homes. Lewis Homes came into the area. Everything north of Nineteenth Street was zoned half acre. Equestrian, horse trails, everything else. Lewis Homes approached the city council and got approval for six thousand square foot in one tract. And then that became two tracks, four tracks, six tracks. I understand the business plan. I understand making money. But that completely destroyed that area, because all the horses had to leave, because then the people are complaining about the flies, the smell, the horse poop in the street, you know? And so I urge you to consider, we are all residents up there on half-acre plus land. Don't let Angle's bottom line be increased at our expense. And we would just urge you to hold this. We've already got R-one-six in that property. Let's just hold it to what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Teresa Bogler.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Teresa Bogler. I live in the Walupai Foothills Estates. Do any of you? Jennifer, I believe you are in the Southern Vista area, which is why you walk on Yavapai Road. Kevin, you're in Rancho Santa Fe. The rest of you? No. We've been doing this dance since June, and we obviously don't want this. So I have a couple of solutions. Take that seventy-one-point-whatever-acre piece of property. Sell it to somebody who will honor those half-acre lots. Or have the applicant sell those half-acre lots, but not use the current developer. Let them pick their own developer. Right now, Angle's got things going on all over town. They don't need that piece of property. We want our neighborhood to stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Gwen Gilman.
Before you start my time, would you give me a clarification from the zoning, planning zoning department? I read something in the proposed amendment to physically suitable... You can't hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. There's a proposed amendment that was up there somewhere. By the, I, I didn't think your presentation was terribly clear.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
It says proposed amendment is physically suitable because...
Ma'am, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can't hear me?
Now we can.
Proposed amendment is physically suitable, and then there were some other points. But what bothered me was saying this one, this will add to the public good. I don't think it's going to add to the public good. I have not a problem with development whatsoever. We, if our community doesn't build, it doesn't grow and it dies. But I've been on Seneca for twenty-six years. When I moved here, there was one commercial building, the little gas and, not the gas and grub, but the little quick stop, storage, and the radio station, which is gone. That was it. That was the only thing up there. I am more concerned about the traffic feeding on to Walupai Mountain Road. We have that, right, right now, we have twenty-one side streets, residential streets, both, both on the north and south, trying to feed into Walupai Mountain Road, either on the, the five-lane section or the two-lane section. Yavapai, from what I understand, I don't take it, because I take Seneca. Yavapai, from what I understand, is flooded half the time when we get a bad rain. I don't know if that's true. I've had people tell me that. But I think the most important thing everyone has to realize is Walupai Mountain Road is the busiest commercial residential street in this city. It's two-point-three miles from Seneca to sixty-six. Seneca is the last street on the east sector before it goes into county property. So my point is, I think you have got to be responsible. If he's talking about two-hundred-and-thirty-three lots, that's four-hundred-and-sixty-six more cars, because planners figure two cars per person. They also figure more than one trip in and out of the development per day, like three. That's what they do in the county, which I work for in planning and zoning. So that was my only, those are my thoughts, is you have got to consider the, be responsible to the people that are trying to get out on Yavapai, on Eastern, which is a big one, we should have a light there, on Mission, which is another big one. These people are taking their lives in their hands, trying to get onto Walupai Mountain Road when the traffic is so sporadic that, you know, they're coming this way, and you're going that way, and you can't get through. That's all I have to say. Development is fine. I don't think we need six thousand square foot lots there. I was one, I worked with Scott Dunton when we first developed that zoning. The twenty, the ten, and the six. And I live on Seneca, which are acre parcels. Frankly, I think acre parcels are a thing of the past, and I think we're going to see a higher density lots. But the responsible thing is to protect the people that already live on those residential streets trying to feed into Walupai Mountain Road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Beverly Shunfus. I hope I didn't murder your name.
That was good. I have a few things. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All righty. First of all, you were talking about the house size, and not as compared to the lot size. Because it's not really the lot size that indicates the price of the house. It's the house size. He could put a smaller house on the bigger lots. I live on the corner, top-left corner of the subject area. I am across the street. You see the triangle where the wash is? I have a third of an acre. He's currently building two houses across the street from me, and now there's going to be more houses on the other side of me. So, I mean, you're saying it's R-one-six, but it's not. There's a variety of lot sizes there in that section. It's not all R-one-six. For the third of an acre, he could easily put, I could not tell you how many people have come by my yard, come to my house, and said, "How come I don't have such a big lot?" You know, you've got such a big lot. Constantly comments from all my neighbors how they would love to have a bigger lot. I don't have a big house. I just have a big lot. And that is what people want. People come to Kingman because they want to be in Kingman. They want to be out in the desert. They want to be out in nature. They want to live someplace where you can be outside all the time, year-round. And yet you build these tiny lots, these houses where the walls are nine feet tall. They can't even see. They're like in a little oven in their backyard, because it's so hot, they're so small. And yet, that's what you think. And he says, "Well, yeah, that's what he's selling." That's because he's the only one selling. He's the only one buying these big tracks, and he's only putting these tiny houses out there with these tiny lots with their big walls. It's not what people want. People would rather buy my lot, but they can't. Every day, we get somebody saying, "Hey, I want to buy your house." So that's what they want. It's what people want. They don't want those tiny lots. And as far as, like, the, you talked about how, how many houses are going to be added, but you didn't talk about how many cars have been added. Since June, we have been asking for a traffic study for Yavapai, and we have been told, in fact, we got laughed at when we talked about adding stop signs or slowdown signs or anything on Yavapai. We have seen too many people almost get hit by cars on Yavapai, and yet nobody will tell us how many cars are going to be increased, how many cars are using it now. I don't understand that. You can tell me how many houses are going to add, but you can't tell me how many cars you're going to add. And yet, you've already asked, "How many of the exits are going to be on Yavapai?" All of them. All of them are going to be on Yavapai. And I will stop, because I'm beeping at this.
Thank you. All right, do we have any more comments?
I'm sorry, so it wasn't clarified on here, so it would, it was actually supposed to be like a public comment? Discuss the new construction, but it was pertaining to...
Okay, I'm Ellen Gillen-Gurten, three-three-six-five Tiffany Avenue, and I live in an R-one-six house built by Angle Homes. Nice home, good construction, lots too small. The CCNRs allow the neighbors to buil, to, to, to build enormous sheds, RVs, trailers. I feel like I live in a public storage, seriously. So as far as the smaller lots are concerned, I am against it. I also clocked, since the police showed me how to do this, I clocked a truck on Yavapai yesterday. 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, 40 miles an hour. This guy's doing 40 in a 25. It's just not, it's just not safe, okay? And I personally would like to see some speed bumps, but that's me. I think it's a good idea for Yavapai and North Central. So again, I'm not against new construction, but I think the lots are too small, the streets are too narrow. They could have done a little bit better job of making things bigger. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, did we have any more public comment? No? All right. I'm going to close public comment and open it up for a commission discussion.
Hold it, you have an answer.
We have one more?
I just think there's been a lot of comments about our 10 lots. Directly north of this, where it's R1.8, we have a, just north of that, we have a fully-developed street that is these larger lots, right? It's been sitting around for about a year. It's been sitting around for about a year and we haven't... It's still sitting. It's not sold, and they are developed lots. So there are these big lots available. If you're driving up Walupi Mountain Road, there's a subdivision that kind of stopped all of a sudden. But we didn't finish it. It's actually shown at the mustard color down in the bottom left-hand corner. That's another subdivision that is our 110 lots, sitting there undeveloped because we're not selling them, right? And so I've just, there's been a lot of talk about this particular size of lots. And I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Those are all... They're not cops.
Point of order, please.
Okay, I'm going to close out public comment now and open it up for commission discussion. Thank you. Public comment is now closed, and I'm going to open it up for commission discussion so that we can discuss it here. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. The existing zoning is R1.6, R10, and R1.20, right? There will be 233 homes built. And so this whole meeting is strictly to decide if we can increase it from 236 homes to 245, right? It's about a 5% increase. So as far as traffic congestion and that kind of thing, there won't be a significant increase going from what's existing to what's proposed.
Another 48 cars.
I disagree.
12 more homes.
Well, I know that, but...
Sir, your out of order.
So right now, we can only have commission discussion. The public discussion has ended, and we have to discuss it between ourselves. But thank you so much.
So I guess what I'm saying is I don't see a significant change going from what's existing to what's proposed.
And won't there be traffic studies and stuff when they do the plot plans and all that?
And it sounds like the city has already determined that some intersection changes need to be addressed and that kind of thing.
All right, Jen, what do you have to say? I know you're formulating some thoughts there for us.
I understand that right now that they, that this is zoned already for 233 lots. I live in this neighborhood. I live on the far end of it. There are no parks in this neighborhood. There are an enormous amount of homes. We have a larger lot, so my children can play in the backyard. We have seven children. On our street, there are 50 children. And there are no parks. So the options that the children have is to play in that desert area right there that's being rezoned, that's being requested to be rezoned, or to play on Yavapai Road because it's wide and has thus not had terribly ton of traffic, although that is changing. The left-turn lane off of Yavapai onto Walupi Mountain Road is very concerning in regards to safety and traffic backup. I use that road quite often. So I, so the fact that the discussion about having an exit and entrance other than Yavapai was taken out of the, was taken out of this presentation, it would be a lot easier to consider this if Yavapai was not the only road receiving this traffic. And this will be hard to receive as well when a proposed 233 lots are coming onto Yavapai. So I also really value the comments that talked about the lot sizes and changing the lot sizes, the precedent it sets, and the implications of it. So I also really appreciated explaining the mathematics around the increased number of houses.
I just have a few comments. One is, there's several, it seems like many of the people here are against sort of any development in this area, which is, you know, a commissioner, one of the commissioners brought up that, you know, this is going to happen regardless. We're just, at least the position I'm seeing is whether or not this buffer zone between these two areas needs to be changed. Looking at the maps, it seems like it really should be there. Now, I've heard the complaints from the public about view. If you're, if you're in the R1.6 area and you're looking up at the Walupis, I mean, it's, you're still going to have R1.6 next to you that's going in regardless. So the view is probably going to be impacted that way. If you're looking down towards Kingman, you're down the hill a little further. So I don't see the view being a big issue. The traffic, though, I do see being an issue because I bring my child, Emmanuel Christian, every morning and I have cars flying by me and everything else. It's pretty wild. So as, again, another commissioner pointed out, that's something that may be addressed in the future. But just stepping back a little bit, I've seen, in my lifetime here, I've seen neighborhood life cycles, I've seen neighborhoods die. I remember when I was a kid, there was the maze, and that was the place everybody wanted to live. It was pretty, there were lawns everywhere. It was a nice neighborhood. And slowly, it atrophied. And now it's, I don't want to say anything bad about the neighborhood, but it's not what it was in its heyday. And I contrast that with, like, say Canyon Shadows, where the lots were a little bigger. And they're still hanging on, it's still doing well. And I can't think of an area in Kingman that's better or more of like a showcase of what Kingman can be than these larger lots on this side, the south side of town. I really don't like, and I hope the city doesn't, start engaging in making these small lots because we really have a winning recipe out there. The people that, the people that I meet in parks or whatever with foreign plates, a lot of times are just poking around, trying to find a place. They want recommendations from locals. "Where would you live if you were, you know? Where would you show me if you were looking for a place to live in town?" I point them toward, you know, South Kingman, some of these large lots over there. And I never see them again, but I assume they go over there and probably buy a house. Maybe, maybe some of you people are, somebody I met in a park a few years ago. So we have a winning recipe. Let's not start, that's just my opinion. We probably shouldn't start setting precedence for removing some of these buffer areas, which are there to protect the property values and the established norms of these neighborhoods. That's my position. So anyway, I appreciate you, Mary.
I believe, too, also, I agree with you. We do this, we're setting the precedent. And we've done this in the past where it's come back to bite us. And I just can't see expanding this. Even for 12, 12 houses, that's another 24 cars, minimum, plus the travel, you know? So I just can't see it.
Does anybody have more thoughts or have any more questions they need to ask?
You entertain a motion?
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm scared of the motion this time.
I make the motion to leave it as is.
All right, so we have a motion to deny this request. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? No?
Chair, before, there might be a commotion or something, I don't know. But just to be clear, this is a recommending situation where this body recommends to the city council whether or not to approve. Just make that clear.
Correct. After, after we make our motion and our recommendations, they will go to city council and then they decide from there. Okay? All right, can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss? I guess approve would be the approve for the deny?
Well, yeah, you've got, the motion is to deny it. So if you vote yes, you're denying it.
So you approve that, okay. Just making sure we're all on the same page. So approve.
Vice Chair Blair?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Deny.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swab?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Deny.
The motion has been denied by a vote of 5 to 2.
Thank you.
So the motion was approved to deny.
Yes, the motion was approved to deny.
That's okay, Laura.
By a vote of 5 to 2. All right, thank you. All right, so the next thing we have on our agenda is just announcement by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Do we have any? I see none. All right, we are adjourned.